Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Casco Township Planning Commission meeting of August 15th. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the undergrowth, in the visual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I just wanted to have a comment on our supervisor and our board. They wanted all of you to know that they were very concerned about our weed ordinance, and we're going to discuss that tonight. So, and to let you know that if you have any other concerns about that, so please give Joe a call. He would like to talk with you directly or meet you out at your property. So, please do. And with that, we will continue with the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions and or corrections to the minutes?
What's that?
No, we're going to protect the noxious weed.
Oh, the noxious weed?
It's not noxious weed.
We're going to, what did we even call that again?
It's the blight ordinance.
Oh, the blight ordinance, yeah. We're going to call it a noxious weed. We're not going to do that.
No.
We're going to call that a blight. That's what we're going to do. Okay. Thank you. Did you, any other additions and or corrections? No, I think it was, I was trying to keep some of the rules right. So, we've changed that to our blight ordinance as our motion to accept the minutes.
I will make the motion to accept the minutes of the Casco Township Planning Commission on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023.
Is there a support? I'll support that. Thanks, John. There's a motion on support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, carry. Next on the agenda is the approval of the
Casco Department of Public Safety.
Yeah, okay. So, we can make that change. Okay. So, we made the change on the agenda of blight ordinance. Just would note that and take that correction on the minutes. Okay, communications. Any communications that we should go over before we move on? Okay. Our next agenda item is what we call discussion from the floor. And this is for our residents to come up to the podium and tell us your name and your address and to let us know how we can help you. So, if you would care to do that, please come up. Come on later, take me.
Keith, I missed the approval of the agenda.
He didn't approve all the minutes. Okay, that's why my computer's here.
Okay. Can we have a motion? Bear with me a second, please. We'll be straightening out nine minutes. So, we need approval.
Approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion for the agenda as presented.
Second then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Moving on. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good, sir. You had your name and address?
Yep. My name is William Ewing. I live at 3787 Elven Road. Yes, sir. I don't know if I'm at the right place or not for this, but I was sent a blight notice. They've given 14 days to comply or we were going to take a leaky, illegal action or whatever. All right? For a barn of mine that the weather took the roof down about two years ago. And I'd been working, trying to get it taken down. As you know, it was a pandemic and I couldn't let anybody come out and work during that. And after that, you can't find anybody to work and you can't find anybody to take down a barn. I went to Hader Salvage. They told me no. I called two other places. They told me no. They weren't going to come out and do it. They were too busy. All right? So, I kept working on it myself. I didn't know the roof was going to come down, but it did. I've had five buildings on that property since I bought it. I've taken down three of the old ones already. When I bought the property, it was a piece of crap. The house, the buildings, everything, right? I've done, in the time I've been there, I've spent thousands of dollars. I've done a lot of work on it and I don't appreciate my house being called blight because of a storm and because of my condition. I'm upset that, insulted that some guy I never heard of doesn't stop by my house or anything and they just send me this notice and give me 14 days to clean up a 40,000 square foot or 4,000, 4,000, 5,000 square foot gambrel barn that the roof collapsed on? Are you kidding me? I'm not happy with this. I've been a resident here for 30 years. You know, I put a brand new barn up. I fixed up a house that was, like I said, a piece of crap when I bought it. I painted it. I take care of my lawn. I can't do things that I used to be able to do. I surely can't predict when nature's going to take the roof down on a barn. All right? I don't even know what you guys expect if it's you guys. I don't even hope that I should be talking to you guys. I don't know if this Ken guy is here or not that wrote me this letter.
Probably the best thing to do is call our supervisor, Joe Stevens. Have you got contact with him?
No, why should I? If they care my own business.
Right. But I mean, if you've got an issue, and obviously you do, and I can appreciate that issue. The Planning Commission, we want to hear what you have to say and what the issues are. And what we can do is move your question to Joe. And why don't we do this? If you don't hear from him in, let's say, 48 hours, then why don't you call me?
You have a card or anything or?
Let me give you my phone number.
It's kind of hard for me to get around and be chasing somebody down.
I understand.
But anyway, what's your phone number? 322-23?
60.
And what was your name?
My name's Keith Telto, T-E-L-T-O-W.
I know the telephone.
Yeah, we're normally fairly decent people.
They've done a lot of work for me over the years.
So, I have no problem with them. Why don't you do that? And then even before we had this meeting, Joe said if we have some folks that would like to talk with him, please give him a call here at the township.
So, who is this, I said Ken, who is this Kurt Fingusback? What's, who's that? I've never heard of him. He is, you I've heard of.
He's our new code enforcer. I wouldn't suggest actually calling him and talking to him since he sent the letter because Joe doesn't do the code enforcing. He does. He would be willing to work with you. He's been pretty good with everybody as long as you call and talk to him.
Well, it just seems not like not the right way to send out a threatening letter to somebody when you have no idea what's going on. I mean, I've already found a new contractor. He's already started before he even got this letter and, you know.
And he gave Kurt all the information. He'll put it on.
And then I get that, get this letter and it's upsetting. And I don't mess around with you guys. I'm not coming down here yelling and screaming. I've never been to a board meeting for any of them because I don't have to.
Right.
You leave me alone. I take care of my business. But you've got to give us time to take care of our business. You can't.
We understand.
All right.
Okay.
I won't repeat myself again, but it's just not right.
I understand and you have a good day. Have a good day.
Want to say something? Wouldn't it have been nicer to send out a warning letter out first? A few weeks before he sent this letter. I live next door to Bill and I know exactly what happened. It's just not right. He shouldn't have been subjected to this. You know, he's had back surgeries. He's been incapacitated for several years. This is, he's ass delinquent. He's walking good compared to what he was a year ago. I mean, the letters shouldn't have been sent saying, okay, we noticed your barn is falling down. Why, we'd like you to have, respond to us why the barn isn't being taken care of. Well, COVID was one reason. Nobody wanted to work and now we can't get anybody. And luckily, he's found somebody that will do it.
Can we have your name and address?
Gina Welsh, 3761 Elven Road.
Thank you.
I mean, it didn't look much like blight. It had four walls up. The roof fell right straight down and so it looked like a building with no roof.
Okay.
And it wasn't, you know, they say, they're saying that it was dangerous. Well, all the doors were locked. You couldn't get in. I couldn't get in. You know, nobody could get in it. It wasn't dangerous. We don't have kids. They were worried about children getting in my barn somehow. You know, I mean, it just sounds like they made this stuff up as we're going along, you know? So, I, it's like I said.
Joe, I thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
So, who's directing the code enforcer?
Folks, folks, in order for us to keep a little bit of control here, we need you to come up to the podium, if you would mind, and give your name and address, please.
Debbie Lips Carbone, 8014 Meisner Road. So, who directs the code enforcer? Who's his boss?
Well, Joe is the township.
So, Joe is?
Township lawyer.
And a township lawyer.
And how long is that? Does he live in our area, the code enforcer?
I don't know.
No.
No.
You don't have to live in the township.
I believe it is a neighboring community.
We've had a code enforcer here for 56 years.
Okay.
About making bone farm laws.
He was that one time.
We got one that started in the draft. Yeah, they went a different route. Anybody else?
Just Jared Keenall, 5779 Church Road. Just in response, as a contractor, meeting with inspectors, it's common and hard and difficult sometimes to have an inspector, code enforcer within jurisdiction that they inspect. So, just so you know, especially the rural areas, if you're lucky, you can.
So, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
They should do their job well though and have a bedside man, which some don't. They take it, they take their permission too seriously.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on.
You know what? I do have a question.
Sure, come on up.
I don't know if it's here or not, but Mary Jo Wallantovic, 8356 Meisner Road. So, this is the Planning Commission. Is this also where the park board is going to be a branch of?
No.
No?
It's its own commission when it starts.
Do you know when that'll be?
I don't know. It was on the last meeting they were discussing it. I can give them a chance.
It's an elaborate plan. We talked about it before. We're meeting.
You should add the board meeting because it's when you can get more information.
Okay. Because for the last four days, I've spent 10 hours a day on trying to complete this cap for benches.
You were here last week, yeah.
Uh huh. I came late though. I was out of town by the time construction. I missed those discussions. So, but yeah, I need to, I just emailed Joe today, just today. So, I didn't know if it was him because I need to know, you know, as of today, we have 714 pounds of caps that are weighed, sorted, dried, and cleaned.
And dried. That's good.
Well, when we, I have four little kitty swimming pools of the dirty gross ones and I'm scrubbing with a vegetable brush and then they had to be dried because they have, they have to be dry otherwise the weight is different and it gets mold and whatever. So, it's been a huge, huge overtaking and I'm really looking forward to having those benches at our park. So, yeah, I need to touch base with somebody pretty soon.
Can you come to the next board meeting and let the board know what's going on? Because the commission might take a little while because they're just going to break the ground soon. They haven't broken ground with our cap.
Okay. So, I'm having surgery tomorrow. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it to the board meeting, but like I said, I just emailed Joe. So, hopefully, okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion from the floor? Okay, we will move on. We will go into unfinished business and it's a discussion of a primary residence occupancy as a requirement for accessory building construction. Steve, can you handle that one a little bit?
Turn me down a bit. Right. So, I believe at the last meeting, we discussed updating some language in the current accessory buildings ordinance under J, unless otherwise provided in this ordinance, an accessory use is subject to all regulations applicable to the principal structure on site and the following. And we decided to update the language for the following to say accessory uses in structures shall be clearly subordinate in area, extent, and purpose to an established and occupied principal use or structure. So, people have understanding that in order to have an accessory building, you have to have a primary building that's currently being used and occupied by either permitted or special man use.
Yeah, that's, that's in our language. That's what we're changing.
Right. And so, that is going to be, that's the language that's going to be a part of the accessory buildings ordinance update or public hearing. And that's going to be in September along with the language for roof buildings that we had to revise.
And that's where we change the square footage. Okay. Any questions? Any more questions than that, planners?
Nope.
Cool. All right. All righty. Let's get down to the wonderful weed ordinance. What are we calling it tonight now?
An addition to the blight ordinance.
Oh, the blight ordinance. I got to get that. Okay. From what I understand, there were some discussions at the township board meeting that the, what was discussed was quite lengthy, maybe a little bit too much of the legalities.
For sure, too much.
Yeah, just a, and people were a little taken back, I think, from that. So, they've asked us to kind of take a look at this again this evening. And so, board members, it's a little bit, we discussed when it was in front of us, I think at the last meeting, where we thought it was a lot of stuff, if you will, and hard for most of us to understand what was going on. So, I believe what they'd like us to do is simplify it and bring it back to the board. So, that's what I'm asking the planners maybe to do tonight, to take a look at this and see if we can't simplify it. Gina, are you on the right track here?
Yes.
And go from there. So, some of the suggestions that I thought might work. And just to start the conversation, it may be such a thing that this paragraph may help a little bit, shall be unlawful. And I'm getting this, by the way, this is a draft noxious weed ordinance that you had, that you had given us.
1942.
It was allowing growth of weeds unlawful under that section. And I know you don't have that with you, folks, but what it stated, it shall be unlawful for the owner, agent, or occupant of any lot, place, area, parcel, or public private land within the township to allow, maintain noxious weed growth on such land. And I had added such as poison ivy, ragweed as an example of noxious crop that would affect the health, safety, and wealth, and welfare of the neighborhood. And I think there was a concern as far as what was happening with the neighbors around an area where this may be happening. So, what our township was trying to do is just give a little more teeth, if you will, into the ordinance to allow our folks to take some action if they had to. And so, again, I, what I'm trying to do is simplify this if we can and go from there. Vicki, are we on the right track here?
Just from my understanding from what was said today is that they were looking at properties that are vacant with houses on it, that's overgrown grass, that's tall, that garbage is behind, you know, that the weeds are, it's not noxious weed so much that we're worried about polluting it. I mean, how are you going to do that out here in the country? It was more for people not cutting their grass.
More of a blight.
If you're vacant properties with buildings on it that aren't cutting their grass, when you can't see garbage and debris and stuff like that. It's not so much, it really has nothing to do with noxious weeds at all. When I, when we're talking about spring or anything like that, it's just for people that live next door, people that aren't maintaining their property or anything on it or their vacant properties that have their sale signs that are not getting their grass cut. That was it.
That was the most part.
That was the most part.
How about the, how about the safety issue from the neighbors, children, that type of thing? Was that?
That was like, because I know there's some properties that someone was complaining about that their, their grass is so overgrown and garbage and things and that stuff. And they were, it's just, that's where the blight comes in because they don't want to have to look at that and you're getting crews and all that other stuff and all that too.
So, why don't you go, why don't you want to kick it back? Do we have to pick like what weeds or whatever? If they have a weed.
That's what they talked about last, last month. It's just a root.
They do a slideshow on weeds or something there?
Well, there was a back end course.
I think what you said is good.
We actually do. And it was kind of long in the length of you. Yeah.
And there was more just weeds that, I mean, everybody's got weeds on their property and how do you control that?
Especially.
Yeah. It's just for overgrown grasses that's really tall and stuff like that. Like there's a house on a separate highway that's up for sale, but they don't, they haven't cut their grass once this year.
Should we get property maintenance?
Does your committee comment on this part?
I like that too.
Property maintenance.
You have to, you have to comment during, at the end of the whole meeting?
I don't, they have your conclusions at the end.
Well, you can do that, Vicki. Steve, why don't you explain that a little bit?
A lot of communities have property maintenance agreement, maintenance ordinances, which talk about things of keeping your property neat, not having junk vehicles or unoccupied or unlicensed junk vehicles, maybe dilapidated buildings. They have these that, especially administered, a community will typically just easily adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, which most of the surrounding communities around here have adopted. And it just gives the enforcement officer the right to work with the property owner whenever they decide to help clean up the property in terms of grass, overgrown grass, trash, vehicles, those kind of things. I think that's probably in the direction we're talking about. It's probably more appropriate right now than noxious weeds. And it gives a lot of flexibility to the ordinance officer and how he handles it. So, maybe the proper way to do is, I don't think the board's in a drastic hurry or maybe they are, I don't know, for Gina, but maybe we need to let us come back with a copy of the International Property Maintenance Code, if you haven't already adopted that.
Yeah, no.
Some property ability codes, misissippability codes, those kind of things.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, we can double check on that before I take any action that we may have to come back and redo.
Planners, what do you think? Gina, would that work, do you think, for?
Yes, I do.
For the board? Vicki, that sounds somewhat reasonable? Okay.
Yeah. I think they'd rather you be thorough than tell it to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, because noxious weeds, I mean, you've got ditches.
Yeah.
That some people just can't cut. I mean, they're deep.
I understand.
You know, and with all the rain we've got this year, they're growing like crazy.
Yeah, maybe she'd have, I don't know, if you killed us and we do the maintenance thing, is that what we're attempting to do?
I think so.
Yeah.
John, what do you think?
Just got to spit back to us points.
We don't, I mean, we don't have anything in the current blight ordinance that regulates overgrown properties, weeds, and, you know, like tall grass, anything like that.
I don't believe so.
Not that I'm aware of. What was that called? What? What, oh, Steve Kason said?
Property maintenance.
That's a national?
Property maintenance code.
What was it?
International Property Maintenance Code.
So, I guess my thing would be, do we add to our current blight ordinance to put some verbiage in there about grass and overgrown weeds and stuff like that? Or do we just adopt this code and it'll cover everything?
I think, and don't, I want to review it again, but I think you could adopt this. You cover everything.
Does that also cover like trees that fall down in a storm and then just leave the tree laying there for six years?
Yes.
Is it right? Okay.
Yes. I would maybe have Steve just look it over just to make sure it covers everything.
Do we have a little motion?
I'll make a motion to request the Mr. Kason reviews the International Property Maintenance Code and provides a recommendation for adoption if we cease to.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Closed, carry. Thank you.
Did you get the name?
And I think this will, this will get the job done. And it'll help all of us to understand what was going to happen in the field. So, okay?
That's good.
All righty. Seven C, the special limits to solar farms within township boundaries. I was jumping on that bandwagon a little bit. I just have a real concern as to how much property in our townships they're going to take for solar energy, DTE, Consumers Power, and you name all the other players. And then Karen and Steve and planners, what I would like to see is that we put that on the agenda for our five-year program. And Karen and you, you and I discussed that a little bit, and Steve to some degree. It'll give us a chance to go through it and just see what might be available. The, we had a seminar a few months ago and I attended that seminar. And what concerned me, and Gina, I think it concerned you also.
Yes, it did.
Was there was a lot of talk about, obviously, solar energy, farm, property, what they were going to use, and how much they need for solar energy, windmills, I mean, you name it. So, the concern I had, I asked a question, was my goodness, how about our federal government and our state governments, are they going to have the ability to condemn or recite which told me a lot? And so, it behooves us to at least be up in front of this to some degree to let you know where we are at as a township. And I think it's a perfect opportunity with a five-year program to put that there. So, that's what we're up to. You okay with that, planners?
Yes.
Nope.
Okay. All righty. New business. All right. Well, I've been waiting for this for a month or so, Tony. And Jim? Yeah? And I, Matthew, correct? Yes. How are you tonight?
Good, super great.
Good, welcome, folks. If you can, just give us a broad scope of what you intend to do here in our township, what we'd like to do in our township.
Could you answer?
Please.
My name is Melanie Alabody. This is my husband, Jim Thomas.
We live at 49544 Compass Point in Chesterfield. We bought a piece of property, about 74, almost 75 acres, right down the road on Church Road. It's just south of Meisner. And, you know, it is essentially a property that has, it's, it's got no electric running through it, it doesn't have any utilities, although we have Edison right next door to us that they have lines going through it. And what we did is, there was a little lot there and we renovated that and started clearing the property and about half of which is forest. And cleaned it up because it had been, been wrecked for so many years.
I'm addicted to plastic.
Yeah. So, what we did is
So, um, what we did is, um, we had a soy farmer and he was willing to come in and had been not a farmer for probably, you know.
About five years before.
Five years. And it is a USDA qualified agricultural parcel. And so we got a guy that came in and he planted soy, which struggled, um, for second, third year. This year with all the rain, there's plenty of soy now. But the reason why it struggled was because the land itself appeared to be on a glacial rift that deposited sand. It was almost as if it was right on the borderline of the property. And the sand that is there, we had excavation done, Steve Rosso came in and he did about sixteen sites. And it goes down about twelve feet. So what what that told us then is that.
It won't retain any moisture. So if it rains like this every day, the soy will do great.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, there's nothing that's really going to flourish there. And that's, that was really what was in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and even this year. When we look at the soy and all the surrounding farms over here, they're they're glorious. And, you know, they're they're huge. Ours are still this big. And, uh, I mean, it's green from distance. But it's it's really not doing anything much. Um, and it's, it kind of leaves the property unusable, you know, from a farming per, you know, perspective. Which, you know, we never bought the property to do anything but to enjoy it and to and to continue to have the thirty-five acres of total property. Enjoy the woods, you know, our son likes to hunt and, you know, we love going out there and watching, you know, the the wildlife and everything else. So we, that was kind of our our whole thing. We live about twelve minutes from here and, you know, how nice is it to be able to be so close to home and to get to a property that's like this? So.
So what happened was, um, we were struggling with the crop and the farmer and the the amount that he was leasing it for. And we started to look at lavender because lavender thrives in sandy soil. And, um, uh, last year we bought about a thousand plants and we planted three different species near a.
It's about three hundred, it felt like a thousand, but it's three hundred.
It's at least ten thousand plants. And because I was planting them by hand. And so what what we had is we had a little plot that was about a hundred and fifty by fifty where we had.
Vegetables.
Tomato and vegetables and stuff next door, next to that, to replace the lavender. We found out which species first and which did not. And about a third did not, certain varieties did not. Uh, we went to Michigan State University, we took some courses there. We had, um, uh, the agricultural extension was very, very helpful with us there. We have contacted people in Maine where they do a lot of lavender farming and B.
In Washington, actually, there's a, one of the largest lavender farms in the country is located in Washington. It's Victor's Lavender Farm. And, um, I've been in a lot of communication with him and he actually wants to come out in October, um, to talk about it, to take a look at the soil and to talk about the different species because he is the largest farmer in the country. And, um, so we've really done a lot of homework on it because it's 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 one of those things that it's not a cheap, it's not a seed that you plant. It does not reseed. It has to be, you know, um, taken off and actually grown from into individual pieces. So it's a very complex type of farming and it's it's not, it's not going to be tilled every year like a lot of farms are. So there's not that component to it. But once these plants are planted, they can, they can thrive for, you know, anywhere between eight and twenty years if they if they're happy.
With two harvests. So, yeah, and there is a big demand for lavender. There's all different things you can do and I know the women know about the smell and and but there's also cooking uses and and other things. So we're really, we're kind of, uh, we're looking at this as something that's more than just a hobby. And the, if you've seen lavender farms where they have those lavenders in a row in France and all the other places, we'd like to try and emulate that. But in order to do it, we have to have water. And so, um, recognizing that there is a high water table there and recognizing that we have nothing but sand. I mean, we, uh, we have asked for a, you know, a, to excavate. And excavate in stages up to almost five acres. We can only do up to five acres under the special manages. So we're asking for a permit to allow us to do that. Towards that end, we provided the the drawings and what it is that we expect to do and where it is. It's not going to be on the road, it's going to be set back near the tree line at first. And then it's going to advance to and towards the road. And, um, we expect to use up, as I said, five acres out of.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Or some acres.
Twelve land, yeah, the rest is left.
Um, great uses for it, I don't expect that we're going to have too much traffic. We're not really looking to do the agro tourism too much, but it would be a perfect place for somebody to have a photo shoot for a high school or a wedding.
Or maybe even education, I mean, I think that there's, there's a lot to be said. You know, you have different schools that are, you know, they're trying to really influence young kids coming in and and introducing them to the whole, you know, farming and growing your own vegetables and how things work. And I think that that would be an opportunity as well.
During the excavation, we don't expect to be operating twenty-four hours. We don't expect to have really much of an impact on the neighborhood. We, um.
Yeah, we.
We can limit the number of hours that the trucks would be operating and we would certainly limit the time based on, we're only going to do stages. So you expect.
Yeah.
First stages are going to be about an acre and a half.
Yeah, well, it it's going to take a little bit of time. I mean, that was my concern. You know, if you do an excavation that 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 is that big in a very short period of time, I mean, you're 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 going to have equipment running nonstop, which will affect the neighbors. And I said, you know, we can't do that. I mean, I wouldn't want to live next door where they were running twenty-four hours a day, right? That doesn't, that doesn't make any work until that point, you know, it was, that's why our timeline is what it is because we're looking at this one okay. You know, we obviously know what we're going to need as this thing continues as far as irrigation. Um, there is a high water table at times, but it also fluctuates. So, you know, having that large of an area, it's really going to be a necessity because if it fluctuates into a dry season, you know, we could be standing there with, you know, a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars of plants that die because they're not excavated. Sorry, not excavated, but irrigated. So this is essentially going to be an irrigation issue for us. Uh, the type of irrigation that it's, that is, um, is best is a drip line. It is not aerial overhead that will cause mold. It will also, you know, um, I mean, it it'll kill the plants. So we can't do that. So we're going to have to do something that's a drip irrigation system. It'll be, you know, initially gas powered, I might look into solar because again, as Jim said, there's no power all the way to the back. It would be extremely costly to bring power all the way. And so, you know, what do you do? Do you go with solar or gas? There's, there's, there's no other choice at this point.
So we had a pre-planning, we, we made a presentation at that time. I want to thank you for at least those that were here so that it gives us a chance to talk about it. We have the the plans here, which were, um, there were some questions and those have been amended. If you have any questions, we'd be very happy to answer them.
The gentleman who drafted those is right here, so.
Let me take a side seat.
And I ask why. Tell you, Mr. Mueller.
Well, I think you guys covered just about everything. There's the, um, the, the irrigation pond is, um, four point nine nine acres. There's roughly a hundred, just under a hundred thousand cubic yards of sand. Um, the soil exploration indicated that it was completely sand suitable for, um, septic field use or areas where sanders can be used for foundations or, uh, maybe the private septic site.
Yeah.
Um, which I think is going to be in pretty high demand, I guess. The St. Clair County is, uh, or it might have been Michigan.
It's the state of Michigan.
State of Michigan is, is, um, upping their review of everybody's septic field, I guess. But so it might be in in high demand, so it's kind of a perfect.
Old Hammer, the sanitarium from St. Clair County, uh, told me that as of June, uh, June, January first of twenty twenty-four, they're going to begin implementation throughout the state to invite, to require that every homeowner on a septic have their septic system inspected, pumped, and inspected by the local sanitarium every five years.
That's amazing.
It, no, it's crazy because, you know, I mean, there's going to be a lot of people, I grew up on a farm out here in St. Clair County, okay? There's going to be a lot of people that have owned their properties and and and, you know, they're, they're going to be challenged and that they have to pay an exorbitant fee to bring sand from a, a, a location up in, you know, up in the thumb area or some other location. It's, it's going to be a burden. So we realize that this, this will also help serve the community.
So how will you guys control what's done with the sand once it leaves your property?
As far as.
Well, you're saying that it would be, you know, the, it would benefit the local community to have it, but whoever you hired to 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 do this excavation could just as easy take the sand and ship it wherever they want. And this local community would have no benefit from that, right?
No, I think you're right. And but the proximity of the local community, the demand from the local community is what we're counting on. And we think that that's going to happen. I mean, it's not like we got some plant that went down the road or even further up north for some expressway. I think that keeping it local is, I mean, it it's a worthy objective and I'm.
I, I completely agree with you, but I guess back to my original question is, how do you control what happens to it after you pay someone else to excavate it and truck it? They have the ability to take it wherever they want at that point, right?
But the excavator and the trucker is going to be local. He'll be here and you know Steve Rosso. So he, he's the one that was here at the planning meeting. We expect that we're going to be using him exclusively. We're not going and using anybody else. Matt, can you give us a, uh, just a quick idea of where this property actually is located and the size?
Um, yes, well, it's on a, on a trip road and it's just south of Meisner. On the east, excuse me, the west side.
East of the golf course.
East of the golf course. Of, um, Toldon, correct. Um, the, the site is kind of already, um, user friendly for what the the two uses are. There's already a haul road or a road that goes through. There's a, um, drainage ditch which pretty much drains entire property. So no impact with adjoining properties and and stormwater runoff. The creation of the, of the pond is, is not going to create water flowing somewhere, it's going to be creating water staying somewhere.
Right.
Um, so it's, there should be zero and will be zero impact for adjoining neighbors. The mining operation is going to be over about five to seven year period. The hours of operations, I think we had down on, it was eight to four.
Correct.
Um, now I did see on the, on the plan that there's a Saturday from eight till noon, but we, that's kind of up to you too. But it's, it's there.
And of course it's seasonal, so that's, that's only as weather permits.
If they need the water for irrigation, what's wrong with the existing ponds on the property?
The existing pond is approximately, well, I, I've seen pictures from nineteen fifty-nine when they used, when, uh, the, the previous owners were out there. That, that pond has been there for a really long time. It was extremely overgrown. Um, since then, it's pretty much filled in. It's very, very shallow. It's great for tadpoles.
We've been using a trash pump to do the garden and to do during the times that we, last year, we're doing the other lavender. And we were draining the pond.
Why can't you increase the size of that pond? What's the deal for the big pond, five acre pond in the middle of the field besides just making it a sand pit? Selling it off like the golf course and those in Columbus Township that never went?
Well, I think she, she mentioned that is that land is is kind of called useless as far as agricultural goes. So it's a perfect fit with removing the sand and creating a, um, irrigation pond for the use of agriculture.
Even expanding the, the, the existing pond would essentially do the same thing. The amount of irrigation we're going to need for, for thirty plus, thirty-five plus acres, you know, of, of, of farmland is going to be extraordinary. And right now, the existing pond, we're trying to use it for a fifty by a one hundred and fifty acre plot. And, um, you know, we're, we're either draining it or it's so clogged with leaves from, from fifty years of neglect that it's, my pumps don't work.
Fifty by a hundred and fifty foot.
Yeah, right, it's just not big enough.
Have a nice big pond is a nice thing to have.
And, and, yeah, exactly.
I find dead west of that in the sand belt also and I can grow soybeans in sand.
Yeah, but what's your production? Because we have not seen any production.
Four hundred acre, which ain't horrible.
Yeah, this is, we've not had that.
I'm right in line under that same color line.
But if you take a look at the geological survey, you'll see much more sand, much deeper sand, much more consistent sand here. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you're making a good production, but we were not.
So along with our, our plans in our pre-construction meeting, um, Melanie and Jim put together a, um, our, their PowerPoint, but it's a Casco Township special land use and kind of tells their story. So that was part of the, um, the packet. Um, there's a pretty extensive amount of questions and and requirements. And a lot of them were, um, kind of requested as a statement of of this or a discussion of that. So, um, the combination of of this and the plans, hopefully in an other discussion, would answer any of you guys' questions.
Steve, it seems like some of the information you have in, in your, in the planning report is contradicts some of the information that they've provided. She mentioned twelve feet excavation, your report says twenty feet. She mentioned about a hundred thousand cubic feet. This calculates up to almost three hundred thousand cubic feet. Wh- what direction are we going here?
The information pulled in my review was based off the specs and the site plan that were, um, that that's what the numbers were. I'll, I can double check them to see if I made any errors, but that's where I pulled my number from. Um, I, I, I did, you know, the review is also based off, um, the statement as well. And my.
I, I don't, I don't believe that you made a mistake or anything. That's not what I'm trying to, to, to infer. I'm just, there's just differing information, so I'm just trying to understand.
We have to base our analysis of the site plan that was provided, there are some contradictions to the site plan in the.
In this, this special use thing? Okay, all right, I understand.
And I think, I think you, I think you mentioned, what was it? You had.
Well, in, in the PowerPoint, the verbiage of the PowerPoint, or maybe it was, uh, Miss Loubaty's verbal. She said ten to twelve feet, uh, where this says twenty feet and at, of depth. Uh, this also says you have to calculate two point six million cubic feet, which is approximately three hundred thousand cubic yards, uh, but that.
Yeah, maybe I made a, I might have made an error on that, but that's, that was my impression when I was out there and they dug the one hole, it was about twelve feet in that area.
They did sixteen more.
Yeah, I was only out there for one though.
Okay, other questions, Planners?
If you can't get power, are putting a lot of your plants by gallon buckets?
No, it'll be a pump system, either solar or or gasoline.
If you have a gathering or if you have some, some kind of generator running.
One of the questions I had, Matt, and, um, with all the excavation that that's going to happen on this retention pond, it's a lot of trucks.
A lot.
A tremendous amount of trucks. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is the, is the neighborhood. You know, Melanie, we've got, what, four or five houses straight in the general area.
Yeah, that was my concern too. That's why I said, you know, I mean, if an irrigation pond is permitted under an agricultural use.
Right.
Okay. And to essentially pile it and and have hills of what it's going to be there, I don't know which would be worse. You know, to have that and have, have dirt flowing all over the place because of the sand, that's where it's going. There's going to be no containment of it, um, so to speak. But more so, I mean, it, it kind of renders it, it, a portion of the area that I need to farm useless. Um, and, and need water. Um, so it's, it's really an issue that, you know, to control the times. So it's, it's realistic for people to, 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 to know that when they're at home barbecuing, they're not going to have this nuisance in their yard, right? And, and that was my whole thing. We have to limit, limit it because, you know, most people get home from work at five o'clock, that's the last thing they want to do. You know, is, is having, is having the business, like I said, run twenty-four seven. I mean, that's, and that's, that's more of the reasons the timeframe was as long as it was.
Would you be willing to be with the, um, with your neighbors?
Of course.
And, and if we could work that through?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I noticed, um.
I mean, we want to be good neighbors, this in the end.
Well, it's, it's going to be paramount out there with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and this in the end, I think is going to improve the property values through every person that abuts that property. Now we just need to figure out how to work together to get there. So it, you know, we all, we're all friends at the end of the day.
So the neighbors right around them right now, were they given notice about this meeting right now? You know, like if it's in within three hundred feet of such a public hearing? You know, like if it's in within three hundred feet of such a public hearing is done, that they were notified? Did they get a letter? The neighbors to there? And does any of them care?
Steve's going to answer that for us.
This is just introductory of this proposal. We'll have to, we'll have to schedule a public hearing before the township will approve it. That will be published in the newspaper. Everybody with that three hundred feet will be notified.
Yeah, Bill?
Is this agricultural, residential, or industrial?
Agricultural.
The proposal is agricultural, but they're coming in on an excavation permit, which requires a special land use approval.
Most landowners residential.
What's the, what's the average root depth of a lavender plant?
The average root depth is somewhere between twelve and fourteen inches typically. They like to spread out. They like their roots to be moist but not saturated, so the sand works well for that, but...
So has any thought been given to what it would take to take off twelve inches of the sand instead of digging a five-acre pond and/or working in, bringing in suitable soil that could either be put on top of the sand or mixed into the sand instead of excavating and trucking all this material off-site?
Well, you have an extraordinary depth of sand, so even if you were to...
But if you're only going down twelve, if your roots only go down twelve inches, doesn't really matter. What's ten feet deep, right?
But I don't think it'll hold water.
It won't hold water. But these don't need water.
That's the problem.
That's the problem, it doesn't hold water.
What I'm saying is if you mix into the sand to make that soil more suitable to hold moisture and grow your crop...
Well, this is the most suitable soil for the crop, so in essence, by altering it or mending it to something else, it would make the crop fail. So this is the most suitable soil for this crop.
What we lack is irrigation. We lack a volume of water to water the plants.
And I should say this, that the plants that we did plant last year, I did a mixture of mulching and I did a mixture of just the sand and then, and some topsoil. And the ones that thrived were the ones in sand. The ones that did not thrive were the ones that got wet with the moisture of the chips that we put around it.
Killed them.
So that makes sense. This really has nothing to do with the property overall. It has to do with getting water on the property.
Yeah, that's what this is about.
You're going to dig a pit though, and it's sand, that's all more water.
It only goes down twelve feet-ish.
Yeah, so this isn't, you know, I know what you referenced earlier because I lived in Columbus Township, okay, and that was an entirely different scenario. We're not saying that we're developing a subdivision and we're building all these water features to build multi-million dollar homes. Those guys went down and they literally dug fifty foot deep.
Yeah, but what they did is they came and stripped all the sand out and then they bailed out of the property and left Columbus Township everybody hanging dry.
I own the property. We've owned the property for some time and we intend on using it and enjoying it. And, you know, and I have to say, I'm local from St. Clair County. I grew up in Iowa Township. This is not an issue where I'm somebody from out of town that's going to blow out of town and never see any of you people again. And I've been in business in this area for thirty-three years, so my reputation means a lot. I'm not going to come in here and tell you that I'm going to do one thing and leave you with a scar and say, "See you later."
It happens though.
Yeah, well, I'm...
What we're looking at is a hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand cubic yards of sand is probably valued at over two to three million dollars. So for anybody to buy a piece of property for a couple hundred grand, turn it into two million, what's to say that you're going to stick around? Or what's to say that excavation isn't going to stop there? When you get a big old check for all this class-two sand that you're selling off, oh, well, now we need a ten-acre pond because our irrigation's not enough because the money's in the sand. I mean, I think that's...
That's not, that's not deniable. Come and look at the property, see what we've done so far.
Well, I don't doubt they cleared it up.
We're invested in it, not financially. I mean, the idea of lavender, I'm getting close to retirement, you know, and I love working out at the farm, and Melanie's a farmer, and so we're out there. So give us the chance to beautify it and make it into something nice. Yeah, the sand's got value. The one that's really going to get the money is the person selling the sand, not us.
Well, you're selling it, right?
Well, he's going to truck it out, and he's going to, he's going to charge us for that. We're not going to make the bulk of that money. It isn't about the money, not with us. We got enough.
Well, and to that point, when you, when you talk about the value, what is the value of lavender? If you did a little bit of research, the value of lavender is one of the most profitable crops that you can possibly grow, okay? If it's properly done, okay, with irrigation, with, with process, with the whole process of it, lavender can bring in anywhere from seventy thousand to a hundred and forty thousand dollars an acre. That's a pretty good reason to stick around. Multiply that.
Per year or...
Per year.
Per harvest.
Per harvest, which is, you can get two harvests.
Chairman?
Yes?
Again, to move this along, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to have the applicant introduce the project, not to approve it or deny it at this time, make any recommendations. The appropriate motion tonight would be to schedule a public hearing. Ms. Luer has already done an analysis that, a very extensive analysis. I don't know if the applicant has that, but we can provide it to the applicant so they can be prepared at the next meeting for to answer the questions that are proposed. At that time then, the planning commission could make a decision or delay a decision to another meeting, but that's what we should do. So really, the appropriate motion, I'll just schedule a public hearing.
Thanks, Steve. And I obviously agree with that. And that's my purpose tonight, was to try and introduce you. It is a little different concept, as you are aware, and we've got some folks in our own neighbors, so these are very good questions. The, the next map, I mean, the next meeting we have is going to be pretty important as to how the presentation, all that turns out, that's a public hearing.
Sure.
And the next step that I'm going to do is ask for one of our planners to make a motion to have you on that, to get ready for that meeting. Anything else from the planners before we move on?
So you're scheduling the meeting. When is the next meeting?
It would be October seventeenth, it would be the next in Oklahoma Territory.
What happens, Jim, is we've tried to do the thirty-one, the thirty-day, and because of the newspapers...
That's fine with us. We were...
You just can't do it.
Yeah, we had...
We wanted to make sure that we were ready.
Okay. Matt could understand that.
One more thing, to keep in mind, they cut that pit around thirty-two, and a lot of the neighbors had dry water wells up to that, and they weren't down to that point of feet.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks, Bill.
So anybody got a shallow well over there?
Yep, that's a good point. I'll check it out.
All right, planners, someone would like to make a motion.
It's October seventeenth.
For October seventeenth, for a public hearing.
I'll make a motion for a public, to invite the applicant to the public hearing on October seventeenth.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carry. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you then.
Okay. Be safe and keep dry. Okay. We will move to number eight B, which is an adjustment to the Casco Township zoning margins, Article fourteen, Section seventy-five, increasing the time of permanent site plan review to fifteen to thirty days. One of the things that we're seeing in our end is just, as you can even tell from tonight, there's just a myriad of information that we have to go through. It's truthfully difficult, especially, I guess I should speak for myself, but to get through all the information for, for the planning commission meetings, to be honest. So we'll throw it open to the planners. What do they think?
We've provided the planning commission with a proposed amendment on Section seventy-five. Site plan review basically says that the application needs to be in thirty days ahead of time, which is consistent with each of the surrounding communities.
Thank you, Steve. What's your pleasure?
We would schedule a public hearing if you agree with this, at the October seventeenth meeting.
Make another motion?
Please. I'll make a motion to increase the time requirement for site plan review from fifteen to thirty days and bring that in front of the, to a public hearing on October seventeenth.
Thanks, John. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, carry. Thank you. Planners report. Anything else, Steve, Karen?
The planning commission and township board and zoning board of appeals have a scheduled training session October thirtieth. I believe it's at seven p.m.
August thirty?
Excuse me, August thirty.
August thirty. August thirty. Do we have a, I know we have a time.
I believe it's seven, but I know Joe was going to send out something.
Yeah.
Seven.
Right here. Okay. Obviously, second from us. Any other questions?
The planning commission, the board of...
No, just the township board, I believe, is writing.
Okay.
I have the board, everything.
Okay. Any else?
No.
Report from committees. Jerry, anything down there?
No, sir.
You're okay?
Hey. This is my last meeting. No.
All right.
I did brush out the property though.
There you go, yeah. Jerry's our chairman of the ZBGA, if you're wondering what we were up to here. Carry on, chair a little bit. All right. What we're going to do is go into session two. What we found is that it's best for us if we split up what the township business is here in session one, and we're going into session two in our five-year program for the township. So Karen, if you want to lead us into that, go please.
Yeah, so provided in your packet tonight is just the list of the goals and objectives from the last Casco Township master plan. Just, you know, these are goals and objectives to keep in mind and think about next meeting I plan to present a partial draft of the Casco master plan, but to review the goals and objectives and think about what's still relevant, what may need to be adjusted. And with that, I also included what the St. Clair County master plan draft has also provided as the county's goals and objectives, so something to kind of compare with and see maybe where you guys can align and support each other.
Good. Okay. And as I always do, we're somewhat on schedule, as far as we can tell, right now. Okay. Thanks. Planners, any questions, comments? Audience, would you have any comments about the five-year development plan for Casco? If you do, please come up and reply.
I want to do about the noxious weed thing. I just need some clarification on that.
Why, I'm sorry?
The noxious weed that was before.
Oh, okay. Anything on the five-year plan, though? You're okay?
Where are the, do you have copies? More copies of that?
And this is, you know, townships do this every five years. They look at their master plan of their township and look where we may need to make some changes or some revisions or something along the lines of how we, how we want the township to grow and how we can protect the township. So that's, that's what this is all about. So I invite you to come back. We've been doing this with phase one, phase two. I think it works fairly well, and so we're going to continue that, okay? To answer your question now, go ahead.
Do you want me to stand up there?
Please.
I don't want to confuse. Okay, I just want to look with a clarification on the, was it decided that we, you were going to look into the International Property Maintenance Code to replace the noxious weed one? Okay, so the noxious weed one is off board?
We were asked to come up with some, really some recommendations from the township board, and as you heard, that, that's going to be where our recommendation is probably going to go.
Okay, because when you started this, you said that, you know, the ordinance was long and hard to read, so you're going to simplify the wording. Now, the problem, I read it, and the problem wasn't the words, it was the overreach and the extremities of control and power that it gives the township over this country living. You know, for example, it was like a dozen weeds that are very, very common. Queen Anne's Lace, for one, as you leave here, you're going to see thousands of it in the ditches and whatnot. Canadian Thistle, things that also have medicinal uses. I mean, this lady was talking about lavender, yeah, there's a lot of things that grow in nature that have a lot of benefits to us. Radweed, okay, I'm allergic to radweed. I don't expect the whole township to eradicate it for my, you know, whatever. I mean, if, if, and then it also, it went on to say that if you didn't eradicate it on your property and it's these dozen or any more that the township deems to consider noxious, that some enforcement person would come on your property, eradicate it for you, charge you, and if you don't pay them, you get a lien on your house. I mean, whoa.
Yeah, it was a bit much.
No, it was a lot much.
It was a lot.
It was, thank you. It was a lot much. So this one, if this is going to be proposed, we're going to be able to read it, review it, and make a decision on it as we did this one. It's not just going to be switched over and...
Probably next meeting, please.
And I can Google this and it'll come up because it's common? It's, okay, cool. Yeah, because from my understanding, because I know there's a lot of places in Michigan that are taking on this ordinance, like if it sprang the bush and you have this little little bitty, you know, postage stamp lot in town, yeah, you can keep Queen Anne's Lace and Thistle out of that, but not here. A lot of people were really concerned about how would they eradicate it? You know, is this going to be a township of, um...
Killer.
Yeah. I'm thinking Miracle World's the other one. Thank you. Yeah, so is Rama going to be sprayed everywhere? That's not healthy for ever.
Rama killer.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So under residential development, is there a little bit more definition to higher density residential? Is that similar to the subdivision that's been growing between County Line and Myers, the I-94? That type of high residential? Are we talking like apartment buildings and such in this plan?
If you're referring to this, this is from the previous plan.
Yeah.
If you go to Casco Township, Casco Township's website, you'll be able to find a copy in there, and they're able to, doesn't describe exactly what layers of residential they were talking about back in two thousand nine.
Okay, so the definition of higher density, is that something like so many residents per...
Higher density varies among communities. You know, when I grew up in Claytown, you have higher densities, thirteen units per acre. Here it might be one or two units per acre. But we're, again, as Karen indicated, these are only the goals of the previous master plan. So if you take a look at those, if you don't agree with them, if you think they're too high, come back as we want. We want to hear what you think is high density, because we're not proposing anything yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We, sir, we would appreciate your input.
All right. Anything else? Planners? Okay? We're set?
Set.
Vicki, I'm going to ask for just one quick moment. Now, I, you know, my wife and I always wanted to go to Hawaii, and what we've been hearing on TV and...
My brother just moved there three weeks ago.
Really. So what we try and do, we take a moment of silence for folks that have been really struggling and my goodness. So if you wouldn't mind, before we leave tonight, can we just have a moment of silence for the folks in Maui, please? So if you wouldn't mind, before we leave tonight, can we just have a moment of silence for the folks in Maui, please? Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. Be safe, go home, enjoy.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Vicky. Motion on a second. That's why we have these people taking care of me over here.